Thirdly would be to determine what properties are subject to reoccurring flooding during an actual 100-year event. And fourth, determine what properties are subject to reoccurring flooding during a 500-year event. We would, of course, have to incorporate use of the floodplain maps. For reference, onsite elevations would need to be shot and analyzed to determine what, you know, if the properties are located in the floodway, 100-year floodplain, 500-year floodplain. For properties located within the city but outside of the regulatory floodplain, and we have had properties that are located away from Salt Creek that experience reoccurring flooding, I think there's probably some in every ward in the city, we would have to determine if the property experiences flooding due to regional stormwater drainage patterns or issues that may not have been caused by past or current owners of the property and would have been caused by subsequent development, change of grades, or a lack of maintenance of existing drainage areas. Then we'd have to also determine if alternatives would exist to correct that situation rather than buy out the property. So, again, we would need to shoot elevations and surrounding elevations to, you know, make some definitive decisions on that. And, of course, we would need to establish an account that would enable the city to contribute funding when the grant monies are less than 100 percent for purchase price. And typically, on a flood buyout, the purchase price is usually figured as the assessed valuation prior to a major flooding event. In other words, after the September 2008 flooding event along Salt Creek, the properties that were damaged the most, the assessor did lower the value on them. But for purchase purposes, we had to go back and find out what the assessed value was prior to that flooding event. Those are the figures that are going to be used, you know, should we be awarded that grant money that we applied for, for the nine properties in that area. Again, the program does need to be voluntary. Once we become aware of funding for such a program, no matter what the source, at that point is when we need to assess which properties have the highest priority, and they should be included in the grants for the applications for the buyout. Once the funding is approved by the city, we'll need to determine if they fit the criteria. And, again, remember too, if we're getting this grant money from federal or state or county sources, they may also have criteria that enter into here. They would actually supersede, you know, our policies and procedures, but we would expect that we would all agree on the same property. It's going to be pretty obvious what properties are having, you know, reoccurring issues and would need to be taken out, so. Any questions?
Okay, and then I don't comment for me, that whether it's category A where the property is within the floodway, or floodplain, or category B outside of the floodplain but inside the city limits, I would think if you're number one in either of those categories, that that would hold priority duly. So, I wouldn't want to say that just in the floodway or plain takes priority over a house that floods repeatedly, being outside the floodplain or way. Mr. Mayor?
John, this policy that we're, is this for when grant money's available and it only has a cost share, or is it going to be, the city's going to buy it outright themselves?
I would think it would fit for either of those reasons, purposes.
And then, when it's out of the floodway like in B, if a house is flooded a couple of times and it's having problems, it says we either have to buy it out, I mean, is the city going to legally all of a sudden be bound to have to buy the home, or put in a retention pond right there immediately? I mean...
I wouldn't think by adopting this, we would be bound to buying any property. All this does is kind of set up parameters of, you know, some procedures that we would follow if the council would decide, okay, this house located at this address, for whatever reasons, every time, you know, we get an inch of rain, the basement floods. And the homeowners come to us looking for some kind of relief. As I say, it would be a voluntary buyout on their part, and of course, the city would kind of pick and choose which properties they felt we would want to participate in purchasing, but, you know, it's totally up to the city council to decide what properties they would want to acquire or not.
You know, when I hear "pick and choose," I get a little nervous, because...
Poor choice of words, sorry.
It looks like, well, if you're a friend of the councils, you can get, you know, I don't know, it kind of opens it up.
Alderman Woods?
John, on the monetary part of it, the assessed valuation, the township assessor's assessed valuation, equalized assessed valuation, or what they perceive to be the market valuation, which is a product of the assessed value?
Right. It's what they perceive to be the market value.
Okay, but, and directly what was on, let's say, the prior assessment, tax year assessment?
Correct.
Is what we would go off of?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Alderman, you, Jim Wesley?
I have a question. Is that program still live with Forest Preserve and the county of buying out properties? Is that dead, or is that still ongoing?
Forest Preserve or Forest View?
What I'm talking about with the Forest Preserve District and County, I know at one time was a cost share when we bought, they bought houses before along Salt Creek.
Oh, okay, no, it's my...
Where is that program, is that program off the table, or is that still on the table? The drawback I have here in Vell Point, we got, and I know exactly there's a house over on, in Joel's War's Eps, Epsin, whatever, street there that, that guy floods out every single time, okay? So where do you, Aspen, so where do you draw the line there? Is there, where is, where do we apply for grant money now for this program?
Correct.
Do we have any idea where that is in the, in the...
The application was submitted a few weeks ago, and to our understanding, it could be up to a year before we know for sure what properties are actually going to be picked.
Okay, and what houses did you put into that grant, which...
There were nine properties. I can get you a list of them. I believe they were all within the Salt Creek floodplain area.
Okay, so, my concern with this policy is, we just did this on a salt creek, we only put nine houses in the Salt Creek area, but then there's some other houses with this policy is scope through the whole city now. And I just don't understand why we didn't put some of those houses that we know flood in the other area into that grant funding.
There were 17 homes that were asked if they want to participate, correct?
Correct.
Nine said yes.
Only along Salt Creek, though.
Wasn't that part of the grant saying that it's along Salt Creek, or wasn't there something about the grant that was along waterways?
Correct.
So, the grant itself is going to take precedence over what we suggest for the grant to purchase, because it was for the waterways or the Salt Creek area, correct?
But this policy that we're adopting tonight, possibly adopting tonight, is citywide?
Well, I don't think it would be...
Am I correct or no?
Yeah, it would be citywide, sure.
Okay, so if we get grant money along Salt Creek, we're going to buy the houses along Salt Creek, but where does this policy fall under if that grant money comes available? Should we not wait until we find out what, if we get that grant money, what our cost share is? Because if we, far as I'm concerned, if we adopt this policy, and, John, it's a good policy, no doubt about it, if we adopt this policy now, and we don't get grant money, are we, are we planning, as a council member, planning on putting money aside to do this policy? The problem is, if we are, I'm in favor of adopting policy, but this council needs to earmark money for this policy. Because if we're going to have a policy hanging out there on buying out properties that voluntary, we need to commit money to this policy then. Because you could adopt all policies you want, but we need to grant, we need to put money into this funding somehow.
And it's acknowledged within this that there has to be some money put into the account?
I agree, I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I agree with everything you say, Alderman Wesley. You're right. I mean, there is an account open, I did make a mistake in here, I'd forgotten that we did open an account, I believe there's about $15,000 in there, and that was kind of our little seed money, so that would be the account we could use. But there would need to be a substantial contribution to that, you know, to make this a viable policy. But again, we, I mean, we'll be looking at each, at each prospective purchase individually, assessing each one of them individually on its merits or not, and, I mean, somebody may come to us for relief for a property that's flooding, and for whatever reasons, we might decide that it doesn't, you know, qualify for, you know, a buyout. I mean, I do not believe that adopting this or adopting these policies would necessarily commit us to buying any problem properties.
Mr. Murmas?
Yeah, Alderman Wesley's correct. He raises some good points. However, I think when we discussed this before, I'm sure Alderman Woods can chime in, the idea was that we've kind of got this in our back pocket to help us as a guide for these other grants, when they become available, so we have something down. And as a bonus, then if we ever have enough money allocated for our own program, then we've already got our own parameters in place. All the grants would have their own parameters, but this is just as a guide. I'm sure Alderman Woods will elaborate if I'm off a little bit.
Alderman, right, Wesley?
John, has the city of Wooddale and the DuPage County Forest Preserve ever joined in on buying property? That's the first question.
Historically, I know that there's been some buying up of properties by the different entities. I don't know if we've gone in half and half on a certain property, but I know that there's properties that, you know, one governmental entity owns, another governmental, and they're kind of just a mix match, and they're not really all contiguous, so, and that was quite some time ago.
I have one more question. If, I don't know what the policy is with the DuPage County Forest Preserve, would this policy interfere with their policy in any which way if there was a joint thing, if the Forest Preserve was willing to join in on buying property?
Well, my thought would be is that similar to the grant, that if the Forest Preserve wants to buy property, they're going to tell us what they want, and then we would go to our priority listing and see what fits within what the Forest Preserve is going to want to do. And then those would be the ones that would get bought out, because we got to fit what the offer party is looking to offer.
That's my point, if, if ours fits theirs, or vice versa.
Mr. Murmas?
Yeah, I'm going to defer to Alderman Woods on this one, because I think he has got the right idea. He's been raising his hand for a while.
Okay, and then I'll call on Alderman Coles, Alderman Woods?
Yeah, the basic concept was that this has been an issue in the city for years, and to compile a list, so when we do get funds, whether it's from another governmental agency, whether they're state funds, whether they're county funds, township funds, co-op with the Forest Preserve, or whatever they are, that we were ahead of the curve and had a list of homes that were already looking to be bought out, or predetermined that they were in an area to be bought out, so we didn't have to, well, let me back up. This will also give us a better opportunity to apply for some of the flood grants and flood funds, because we'll have this information ongoing, so when something comes up, we don't have to go out and try to do a study and inadvertently throw things on there that don't belong on there. We'll just be, this is a steering vehicle just to put us in a better position to deal with a problem that's been ongoing in the city for as long as I can remember, and I'm sure Alderman Coles will agree.
Alderman Coles?
Talking about the house on Aspen, that's been flooded out many, many times. That particular house has four sump pumps in it, and they still can't keep up with the water that comes in. But that's all because of DuPage Forest Preserve will not put a retention pond in that area, which they have, they have their area to do. If they would put a retention pond in, that house would not flood. But, nobody can get them, because they keep telling me and telling everybody, they do not build retention ponds, but they will flood out people. So, that house has been flooding since I've lived there. They use both ends of our street floods, and all comes out of the Forest Preserve. And they still won't do nothing about it. As far as I'm concerned, the Forest Reserve can climb a tree. That's my, my thing, of the Forest Reserve. I'm sorry, but I will not vote for anything for the Forest Reserve.
This isn't for the Forest Reserve. This is for the city.
I know that.
Okay.
And I wish we could do something for the man that bought that, because the lady that sold it to, told him it doesn't flood. But the first good rainstorm we had, he was walking out with hip boots on.
Okay, so I want to know, like, is, are we against having a priority list? I think it's very important, Alderman Coles, so are we against having a priority list? Because I firmly believe that we have to know what we're asking for if someone says, we have money to give you. And then you go down the list, what fits the criteria. We're ready. So, who doesn't want that? Because we're not going to keep working on it if a majority of us don't want that. And then we'll be scrambling when someone says, I have money, and then we'll try and figure out, should we take it? And then when we're deciding, then we're going to lose the money, just like we do all the time. So, who, who doesn't want to work on this? Alderman, you, Jim Wesley, do you not want to work on this?
I didn't say anything while we're working on it. I don't say I don't want to work on it, but I think there's some other houses that need to be added on that criteria list, like the one poor guy down there that always floods out. You just can't put a master list along Salt Creek. I think we know what area floods out, we know with all our data from the flooding area, those houses should also be added on those lists regardless, and that should be added in. I'm just saying, I want to work on this, but we need to tweak it a little more. That's all I'm saying.
Alderman Woods?
To Alderman Wesley's point, that is what we're doing. The list that they had, that John and staff had put together earlier, really isn't all-inclusive of what we're trying to do here. That's why we're trying to create the policy to make it more inclusive of the singled-out houses, not only the houses along the creek and in the floodplain and in the floodway, but all those other houses that are singled out, whether they're impacted by the Forest Preserve, impacted by regrading, whether they're impacted by new subdivisions, all those other things that happened that alter the groundwater and flow will be assessed, and those houses will be, that's why we're trying to adopt this policy. Thank you.
Alderman Coles, do you wish to say anything else?
No, all I can say is, we've got to, we've got to make some announcement to the people that, that don't live along Salt Creek, that in case their houses do flood out, that they contact the city and put their names down on the, on the list.
Right.
That would be a good idea.
Right, and has complaints come in, Ray? Mr. Forrest?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Just to address Alderman Wesley's comments, it was not our intention or scope when we were preparing this to actually start compiling a list of actual properties that would be included in the buyout. It was more our intention to come up with policy and procedures. Once this is, you know, acceptable to everybody at that point, we can go around and start assessing some of these properties. But it was not the intention to include a list of properties...
Right.
...on this policy and procedure.
So, I think next steps are, is that, are there any revisions to this before we start populating a list of properties? Is that correct?
Yeah, I would say if there are any revisions that, you know, your members of the council want on this, and then the next step would be to have the city attorney prepare a resolution adopting the policies and procedures. I mean, we could actually spell it out in a more formal form than just having it be in a memo form for the actual resolution.
And with all the legal terms of we're not bound to the list...
Correct, yeah, that would need to be...
...depending on, yeah.
Correct. That would need to be prepared and then adopted at council.
Okay, so, so my recommendation on the verbiage is, item A1, to strike what's in parentheses there, which states these should be the first to be considered for purchase. Mr. Mayor, did, did you have a comment? Were you raising your hand?
Actually, I was just going to say, you know, there could be 15 homes that are not on the creek...
Right.
And all of a sudden now, buy me first, buy me first. I mean, you know, we don't have all that money, and the city has never purchased homes. I mean, it's cost share, I thought we did. I just want to make sure we're careful and we don't set some kind of precedence that could get ugly.
Mr. Forrest?
Again, I don't believe adopting these is throwing open the door and saying, if your property floods, come on in, we're going to buy you out. That's not the intention of this. The intention is to set up policies and procedures for when we want to initiate a program, or it's felt that a property should be purchased, you know, whatever funds are used, we have policy and procedure, it's already been adopted. So this is not throw the doors open, hey, come on in, we're going to buy your property. That's not the intention of this.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, as far as C, I would just ask that we add a little more clarity to assessed valuation, so that people have a little better understanding, maybe change that verbiage up a little bit, or expand it. Because I think that's going to be a big issue, too. Everybody wants to be bought out, but I think that ahead of time, they need to have at least a fairly good understanding of what the possible financial impacts would be going on that list, or what they could possibly hope to receive as a buyout price. Thank you.
I'm going to agree that, or even now, the homes that aren't, that weren't part of the 2008 flood event, that there's going to be valuations that are very low right now, and they might just start flooding. So, I, I think there might be a, a better way of looking at the value. Any other comments before we go to the next item here? Okay, so then, Mr. Forrest, do you need any kind of, you know, motion to go forward with this as, as suggested?
No, I think we have direction.
Okay. And then you'll come back with the redraft?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next item is item number five, important recommendation on the groundwater ordinance. Mr. Forrest?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. This issue, apparently the city attorney's office was contacted by the attorneys for the Shell gas station that is on the southeast corner of Irving Park and Wooddale Road. And the IEPA was requesting from them a groundwater ordinance that would prohibit the installation of any new private potable water wells within a certain radius of the gas station. It's my understanding, the EPA is now going to start requiring these types of ordinances pretty much at every gas station. In this particular case, with our gas station at Wooddale and Irving, this is not indicative or a result of any sort of a spill that's been detected on the site. Rather, this more, this is more of a preemptive action that the IEPA is taking. As I say, the city attorney's office told me that it's their understanding that these are going to start to be required of every gas station, particularly if there's a transfer of ownership, or if they do any work at the station, particularly to the tanks or the pumping equipment. They did, initially, this came forward in mid-2010, we were starting to work on it, but then they thought that there was a private well within this footprint area. Further investigation showed that there is not a private well there. We don't expect this to be a problem, it's an institutional control by the EPA to prohibit any new wells in that, again, within that footprint. The city of Wooddale municipal code already prohibits the installation of new private water wells, so in a way, this is just kind of further clarifying and further restricting within the area. This ordinance was prepared by the city attorney's office, along with the attorneys for Shell, and, you know, it's, I hate to downplay it and just say it's a housekeeping item, but it's sort of a housekeeping item.
Okay. Any questions? Alderman, you, Jim Wesley?
I just have one question. Why is it, this 110 East Irving Park Road, if we adopt this ordinance, and I think it's a good, it's citywide, right?
No.
So why would we just do 110 East Irving Park Road? Because if it's got to do with the gas station, why aren't we doing it on, further down on Irving that's a gas station? Why aren't we doing it up in Thorndale? Why aren't we doing it up in that area? Because if Thorndale Road pops for reconstruction, I mean, you know, so why would we, why would piecemeal ordinance and not do it citywide? I just don't understand that. Why just one gas station area? Is IP going to go to the other gas stations, now we need one for that area? Why can't we do it citywide?
That's a good question.
I mean, I just don't know why we're just doing one area.
Well, we would have to specifically include a map of each gas station and the area, the radius around the gas station where any new water wells would be restricted. Again, our municipal code already prohibits the installation of any new private water wells. So, I guess this is just an EPA, as I say, it's sort of a housekeeping thing for the IEPA, just verifying that nowhere within this radius will there be any new wells drilled. I could certainly talk to the office of the city attorney prior to the council meeting and see if it would...
Because here's, Madam Chairman, can I, here's the reason why I say this. We're going to pay Pat Bond enough to write this ordinance up, now I'm going to have Shell Gas Station, another gas station, saying we're going to have to do that area, so now I'm going to have another ordinance. I would sooner go citywide with this if that's the case. It ain't that hard. We know where the gas stations are, we know what could possibly go there. I would ask that this goes citywide.
Did the IEPA specifically ask for this gas station?
I think, so the way I understood it in talking with you, Mr. Forrest, is that Shell put themselves on the radar screen by doing their work in 2010, and then IEPA started looking at it, and they said, oh, let's make sure there's no underground, underground water wells there, so this is satisfying IEPA, because that gas station was on the radar list. And then, I'm going to ask for Mr. Mayor's question, then Mr. Murmas, then I'll go to Alderman Woods. Mr. Mayor?
Honestly, you just said what I, I was just curious if IEPA specifically wanted this one, but that's how it got started.
Yeah. Mr. Murmas?
It's my understanding that Shell actually came to us, they, Pat Bond reviewed the ordinance, but their attorney drafted the ordinance. We didn't pay anything to draft the ordinance. I think it's on a one-by-one basis. I'll defer to the city attorney on this one, though I'd feel more comfortable with him answering the questions at the next council meeting. But I know that Shell drafted the ordinance and our attorney reviewed it.
Thank you. Alderman Woods?
Yeah, my understanding, I did a little reading on it, and it is a one-by-one. It isn't a matter of just passing a blanket thing. I have a couple of concerns. One, the statement in there that the IEPA will allow the property owner to maintain the property without requiring a complete cleanup of the contaminants from the soil. Is that today, tomorrow, or forever? That's my first question.
I think at this point, the best thing would be for us to defer these types of questions to the city attorney. You know, again, since the attorneys prepared this, we were kind of briefed on this and brought in for presentation to you, but as far as the scope of what the IEPA is going to require, I would rather have the city attorney comment on that, he could probably give you a better answer.
Okay, so...
Can I throw in two more things? Because they can pass it on to the attorney.
Right, right, so it's okay, Alderman Woods is going to give the questions, he'll give a minute, and then, Mr. Forrest, can, can you get, pass them on to the attorney, so then, first council meeting in January, we can get the answers and decide whether we're going to pass it or not at that time? Okay, continue.
Part of this goes to what Alderman Wesley brought up, although you can't offer a blanket ordinance covering the whole city, you can reference the fact our city code doesn't allow the drilling of wells, and then enter into a memo of understanding with the IEPA, which will help clean up some of the issues that we're talking about, because if Shell's coming for that one, they'll be coming for the next one, and then Marathon will come. Wooddale has not done one yet, although if you look at the surrounding cities, villages, I wouldn't say they did a lot of them, but probably... I wouldn't say they did a lot of them, but probably three to five apiece that I saw. Those were the only issues that I would say that we need to look into. Thank you.
Anything else? So I'm thinking what we'll do is table this item to the city council. So I'm going to make that motion unless, Mr. Murmice, before I make the motion, do you have a concern on that?
Typically, I think we would just, you know, pass it pending, you know, questions with the attorney, so we can move it forward. And then when it gets to the council, if the council's not satisfied with the answers, then, you know, you vote it down. I mean, logistically, it'll work either way, but historically, I mean, we've done it that way.
Right, exactly. I have a good question. So Alderman Lazarus is asking, is there a timeframe on this? Are they in a hurry for this?
No, I don't believe so. As I say, it's been kind of languishing since mid-2010, while the EPA did some research to see if there were any other wells within this restricted area. So I'm sure a couple of weeks is not going to make any difference.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Well, I'm going to make the motion to table to city council. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is items to be considered at future meetings. A, amendments to local building code in January. Item B is deed certification. What's that?
That's going to address the possibilities of beginning a program where we would do inspections of properties at the point of sale when properties are transferred.
Okay, thank you. And then item C, is this the discussion with Mr. Clicker on what we want? And, okay, good, I'm glad that's on there. Okay, anything else on future meetings? I make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'll call the Public Works Committee order. Make the minutes taken, saying people are present. I need the motion to approve the minutes from October, I mean, December 8, 2011. That is my motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns? All in favor? Aye.
Item number four, reporting recommendation resolution, adopting resolution for a drug and alcohol policy and testing program for Pace Vanpool Lees agreement. You know what? Maybe, do we have to do that, or should we talk about the pace? Could we do number five first, Jeff, in case?
I was just going to say, maybe let's flip-flop them.
Okay. All right. I'll hold off on item four and go to five because five will tie into the other part. Reporting regulation for Pace Vanpool lease agreement. In your memo, we received that, I believe, bus company will not allow us to leave the decals or anything on. Okay. Maybe that changed. Mr. Kramer?
No, I'll just summarize a little bit for you. For the last five years, we've had a dial-a-ride van provided by Pace Vanpool Services. We pay $100 a month for the lease of that vehicle, and that lease has come to term. So we are to the point where we need to either, A, sign a new lease for a new vehicle for a determined amount of time, purchase this vehicle, continue with dial-a-ride in a different fashion, or no longer continue with dial-a-ride. So what you have before you, when we spoke with Pace last month, they indicated that we could start a new lease, but we would not be able to advertise for local hotels on the new van. They've started a policy where they do not allow any outside advertisement outside of a city logo. That would be the only advertisement that we would be allowed to put on the van. It would look very similar to our Public Works vehicles, where they would have a city logo located on the side. There would no longer be the rap-style advertisement. So what you have before you are the Vanpool lease, requesting that we be allowed to go and interact with the city attorney and Pace to set up a new lease. And then the second item is basically the drug and alcohol policy in order to drive Pace vans myself, and the drivers all need to be DOT certified and drug-tested using their facility. If we want to do it ourselves, we'd have to go through our own administration program to do that, and I would recommend just adopting Paces and following their guidelines. So those are the two items you have before you.
Okay. I, okay, go ahead. Frank Lazarus?
This total budget of $44,177.50, that's for the year, is that correct? I just want to make sure I got that right.
Kramer? Correct. That's the expenses for the year. That does not include our revenues that we get from that. We average about $300 a month in revenues coming in from ridership.
Okay. Which was my follow-up question. How many people do we actually have using this?
Mr. Kramer? I actually pulled two months on the request of the city manager. In August of this year, we had 23 days that the van was used. That was working days for Public Works. We provided 216 trips, which averaged out to about 9.3 trips a day. In November last month, we had 19 days of service and 179 trips, so 9.4 trips per day. And trips is traditionally a trip there and a trip back for a rider. So of those 9.4, it's actually half, so we're driving about four people a day, four to five people a day.
So this isn't really a moneymaker for us? This is pretty much a loss?
Correct. We subsidize the program almost entirely.
Right. Thank you.
Mr. Murmice?
Just to go back to Alderman Lazarus, it's, the program was never meant to be a moneymaker. It was always meant to be a service to the residents jointly with Pace. We do get a pretty good deal on the Pace van. Our main cost of, you know, subsidization is, you know, employees. So it was never meant to be a moneymaker. It's a service that the community provides.
Mr. Lazarus? Go ahead.
What is our loss on this? Do we know?
Well, you said, what, 300 a month times 12? Whatever that is.
Thirty-six, Art.
Minus $44,000.
Okay.
Forty thousand.
Right. Thank you. Mr. Woods?
Notice you had your hand.
Frank asked my question. I'm good.
I have, okay, Alderman Roy Wesley. Our hours in operation of this van is what?
Mr. Kramer? 8:30 to 3:30, basically, the hours of Public Works. They're, the drivers are local 150 operating engineers like the rest of Public Works employees. We basically start the program about 8:30 in the morning, and we stop at around 3 o'clock, but we have been known to go to 3:30.
What's the hours of the township? Mr. Kramer?
I don't have Addison Township's dial-a-ride hours off the top of my head.
The reason why I'm asking these questions is I'm thinking, is it kind of worth it for Wooddale residents? I don't know what the township charges for their dial-ride. But is it worth it just to look at the township and for the city residents that are using it, subsidize it where we would still pay for some of their rides at a discount, whatever we charge versus what the township charges? Something to look at. So, I mean, I'd like to know those hours of what the township charges and...
Can we get that? Okay. Mr. Coles?
We go through this every year when this comes up with the township of Addison. In order for people to get the township of Addison, they have to call in a day ahead of time to make an appointment before they pick them up. Because I know somebody that drives for them. And they, they have two vans, and they both are busy. And if they're busy and they're still waiting for somebody to come out of the hospital or something like that, the person who ordered the van that particular time will have to wait for another day. The township of Addison does not do very good delivery into Wooddale. Because I know who drives. And we go through this every year, and every year, we talk about what's, how much does it cost for Addison, and how much does it cost for the, and as far as, we've always ended up with a dial-a-ride here in Wooddale. You don't know about it because you haven't been here long enough, but I have been here long enough. And so I'm just letting you know that if you want township of Addison, you're going to have to tell the people here that you're going to have to call a day ahead of time, make an appointment, and maybe they might get that day that they wanted. Okay? Thank you.
Okay. Mike, you had your hand up? Okay. Mayor?
Go ahead. Defer to just... Mr. Kramer? I believe Mr. Wilson just looked up the hours for Addison Township dial-a-ride. Their hours are 10 to 3. So they're actually less or more restrictive than ours.
Go ahead, Mr.
If the council's concerned about switching over the program from tourism to general fund and the budget impact, I apologize that I don't have up-to-date information for you today, but that's through no fault of mine. Sure, Mr. Kramer would agree. We don't like to throw people under the bus, but Pace is notoriously slow at getting back to us. I've got a couple of calls placed into them, as well as the area hotels, and I'm trying to work out a way to keep the, keep the program in tourism, but I can't confirm that yet, but there are some ideas that I have to keep it in there. Unfortunately, Pace is not very cooperative with returning calls in a timely manner, so I don't have it ready for tonight. But we had talked about that idea before.
Mayor?
John, I just want to clarify. When you said trips, so if you pick them up, bring them to the Jewel or bring them to the Lexian Brothers and back, that's one trip? Back and forth, round trip? Or is it one trip to the Lexian Brothers and back home, that's two trips?
Mr. Kramer? When I refer to a trip, it's a one-way, because they're charged one-way. So they're picked up at a location and dropped off. If they're picked up again from that location and brought back to their original destination, that's a second trip. So when I said 9.4 trips a day, I meant there's probably, traditionally, there, you know, that's a round trip, so we only picked up really five people that day.
And how many trips a year? I'm hearing like 1,000, possibly, right?
I think I averaged where we had either 178 to 200 a month. So you're talking, you know, close to 2,000 a month or 2,000 a year?
Thousand. So basically, if they go round trip, it costs us $44.
There's a couple of packages. As far as you can buy passes for riderships, for seniors and handicapped, they can purchase a 10-ride pass for $18, or the flat rate is $3 a trip, basically. And then for all other riders, you can purchase a pass of 10 rides for $34 or pay a flat $4 per trip charge. So it's either $3 or $4, or there are some pass options. For the most part, most of the riders do use the pass portion because our ridership is fairly repetitive. We don't have a lot of one-and-dones. It's more, you know, where they use the program multiple times a week.
Right. Okay. I have one question, and maybe if I answer, someone can answer. How does one of our employees, part-time employees, get IMRF? Oh, you, go ahead.
I think I can answer that. That employee had been with the city for a long period of time, was actually grandfathered in under the IMRF program.
Really?
Correct.
My question here is, in my concern, why could we not, and I'm looking at both perspectives here, why could we not contact a taxi cab service company? We know our everyday riders. You said right now that there's one that goes all the way. Will that be benefiting us to see what taxi cab service may be interested in signing a lease with us for, you know, let them come up with a price? We give them the information, how much, and maybe it will be cheaper than putting the dial-ride back in service. We still give them the option out there to the people. Will that be the option? And I know Jeff's working on something else, but I really would like to look into that option, too. Because if we get rid of this, I'll tell you one thing, it's going to save on, in the long run, it's going to save on, depends what the taxi cab service comes up with a price, we're going to save on three employees' salaries. The IMRF is gone, I mean, because if we do that. So I think we need to look at all options at this time. You know, that might be the better cost for us. I don't know if that's going to work. I'm destroying that suggestion out there. So I would like to look into that. Contact our local taxi cab service company, or whoever we may use here, and see if they're even interested in doing something like that. And therefore, in that case, that answers, that answers the question that Joe brought up, you have to call in a day in advance. Well, we already call in, our policy states that they call in a day in advance now. Okay? So they still do the same thing the township does. But in this case, with taxi cab service, they could pick up the phone that night or that morning and say, hey, I need to go here. Bang, we don't have to worry about that. So it's going to help the people in the town, that's a lot easier for them to get the service moved out, and it may save us some cost if we can't take it out of the tourism fund. That is my concern. I would like you guys to look at that if all possible. Mr. Coles, you know, I notice your hands up.
Yeah. I'm going to go disagree with you again. We tried that, too. And the people, the elderly people that get in the dial-a-ride bus know the bus driver, and if he gets to the taxi cab, they don't know it. And if you take a person that's 80 or 85, and you don't know who's coming to pick you up, they're scared to get in a cab with people that they don't know. And another thing, when the person gets to them, have you ever seen what happens when they get to them? They open, they just reach back, open up the door, and the person that's 80 years old, or 65 or 70, has a hard job getting out, they don't get out of their seat to help them. But the dial-a-ride guy gets off the bus, he helps them out. You should see what they do. I watched them. One time at Walgreens, when a bus came there, the guy got out, the lady was, had crutches, he helped her out of the van and everything. So that would not happen with a taxi cab. And a taxi cab, you don't know who you're getting, a driver. You, he might not even know where he's going. Half of the drivers don't know where they're going anyway. And you're talking to get people that live in Wooddale in cabs that they don't have, they don't know who they are behind the wheel. I think we go through this every year that this thing comes up, and we always end up with a dial-a-ride. So I don't care what it costs. If it costs us $40,000, we should do it. It's a, it's a thing for the elderly people in Wooddale. And remember, there's a lot of elderly people in Wooddale.
Okay. Start, Woods.
I'm done.
I would agree with Alderman Coles. I think it's a great service for the city. I think it speaks well of the city, and I think it's, helps out the seniors in the city, and there is a large growing segment of seniors in Wooddale. My question would probably be more along the lines of, are we adequately servicing that group of people? Would we, or could we possibly pick up more people? I believe we only have one vehicle. Could we look into two? Would we, do we have a call for that? That would be a question.
Mr. Kramer? At this point, to address ridership, I think... At this point, to address ridership, I think, right now, the hours limit us. That's probably our largest factor. If we started earlier and picked up perhaps off the train station or did some more advertising to allow special needs, things like that, to different various functions and work-related items, perhaps our ridership would go up. Our ridership stayed fairly flat since I've been here. I can only speak to ridership going back to about '08, but we've stayed pretty consistent. You know, for most times, we have a fairly busy day. There are some days that we turn people away. To be honest, tomorrow's a half-day for us. I had some riders call in today trying to arrange a ride for tomorrow. We were full. Right now, we only have two part-time drivers. So in order to put two people on, I would suggest we would have to hire some additional part-time drivers in order to do that. We have two vehicles currently. We have a vehicle that was, that is coming off of lease from Pace, and our previous vehicle that we have, we purchased from Pace for $1. The reason why we purchased that, that vehicle was handicap accessible and had a wheelchair lift. The current vehicle we leased from Pace does not have that. So when we have ridership that requires those abilities to carry a person in a wheelchair, we have the ability to do that. The thought was, our next vehicle that we leased, get a vehicle that had a handicap ramp accessible on it, get rid of the vehicle that we currently own, because right now, we're, you know, that's a maintenance cost we incur. Another vehicle, we have to PM another vehicle in our city fleet. It costs us money and really is not used all that much. So again, if we wanted to expand the program, A, number one for me would be expand hours. Number two, we, we would need to expand staff. And number three, we'd have to look at, if you want to do two vans during the day, I would have to really look at ridership first to see if it warranted a second van and another employee.
Yeah, that was going to be the second question. When I looked at some other communities and talked to other people, talked to the seniors here, talked to seniors in other communities, that was one of the big distinguishing factors, is that the other communities had a broader hour base of operation, like 7:00 to 5:30. Especially with the senior group, they either want to get out early and get things done and get back home. And then at 3:00, if we're cutting it off at 3:00, that's kind of in-between, it's timeframe. So I would like to see if you could look into what it would cost us to, to increase the hours of operation for one, and then maybe in the future, look if we could add to the program or what that cost would be, or if there was any benefit, if you could do some kind of analysis on that. Be great. Thank you.
Hey, any other questions?
Mr. Kramer? I would ask if we're going to look for further information down the line. I would ask that we pass the drug and alcohol policy that does not obligate us to signing any lease. It just basically says that, you know, we're going to follow the drug and alcohol policy set forth by Pace. We do this every year. It's very routine. I would just ask that we complete that so we could sign that, send that into Pace, so we are, again, compliant for the upcoming year.
All right. Then I'll go back to item number four to go ahead and pass the drug testing policy before we could send it off to Pace. That will be my motion on the floor. Questions, concern? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I guess item number five, you're going to come back with some information. Jeff is still working on some information. So we will, are we? Go ahead.
Before Mr. Kramer does work on looking at expansion and that sort of thing, do we have a sense for how many times it gets requested in off-hour? I mean, if we're not getting the request, I don't think that we would do the work. But people that call and say, what are your hours? I mean, people are still going to call. They're not going to always go on the web and see if the hour they're posted and what they're... Do you know if people have complained in the past?
Mr. Kramer? Correct. We have had some claim, some complaints about the evening hours, especially because of doctor's appointments. We do, you know, take a lot of people to and from various medical facilities around town. The doctor's appointments are probably the ones we get the biggest question about, because they may have a late appointment or an appointment that may stretch beyond 3:00 or 3:30. And we try and accommodate as best those as possible, but unfortunately, sometimes we're not. If they know that, you know, they're going to go till 4:00, we can't hold the van for that period of time. So those would be probably the largest complaints. I would think, once we expand the hours, I'm sure we would be able, over time, to fill those additional hours, especially in the morning. But right now, the biggest demand that we've gotten is for the evening hours.
Okay, thank you.
I just had a question for the council. How aggressive do you want me to be in my negotiations with getting this out of, you know, keeping it in tourism dollars? Is this important to the council, or do you, or is it not?
I will tell you my opinion. I would try to see if we could leave it in tourism, but but I don't know if we could. But I mean, if we could leave it in tourism, I, I think it should be funded, all that. If not, we're going to have to come back to council and determine where we're going to get $44,000 to keep this program. And I, believe me, I'm not against this program at all, but I'm just looking at other options. Mr. Woods? Your hand up?
Follows, uh, one, I have a question to city manager's question of how aggressive, what does that mean? If you could get it and have it stay in tourism, yes.
I just want to know how much of a pain in the butt you want me to be with Pace and other entities.
As big as you can be.
Okay.
Alderman Roy Wesley? Your hand up?
I guess it was my same question, saying, why would you even consider trying to keep in the general fund and just keep it in tourism? So, just, that's the...
Mayor, please.
I'm just curious. How many other municipalities? Alderman Woods said something about 7 to 5. Is there other, everybody around us has a program, or, I'll be honest with you, I'm not sure. I have heard the township. And could we find out how many riders they get? Maybe, you know, somebody who's 7 to 5, maybe they're getting 10,000 riders a year or something. Do we, could we find, is that something we can find out?
Mr. Woods, do you know who might have it? That you might have checked into?
Most of the communities I talked to are not neighboring communities to us. I went to ones that I know had, you know, pretty good systems established and looked at the trends that they had and that they've run for years. So I don't know if that would be a good model for us population-wise. I'm just looking at, between what I've talked to other cities and municipalities and talking to seniors here, one of the biggest complaints from the seniors here were the hours of operation. And it directly went to what Mr. Kramer said, and mainly, it's either early hair appointments or later doctor appointments. Those are the two issues.
Mr. Kramer?
Your hand up?
I guarantee Pace can give us some demographics on other programs similar to ours. I know some of the some of the programs in surrounding municipalities are far larger than ours. They run a true paratransit program. They're much larger. Multiple routes, service routes with multiple vehicles. Again, our, our ridership area, the area that we transport people in is Beasterfield to the north, Lake Street to the south, 83 to the east, and 53 to the west. So we have a relatively small area. Anything outside of that, our vehicle gets tied up. The return trips just aren't, you know, we're tied up too much in drive time, staring at the windshield. So if we keep people within those areas, that kind of limits our service location, allows us to get a lot of riders in that smaller area. But I will contact Pace, and we'll get some neighboring communities and try and get some like-sized communities to see what hours they have.
Thank you.
I was looking at the Pace website, actually, last week, and it was a little disturbing because we weren't listed on the website as a dial-a-ride provider. So that was another reason why I was disturbed with Pace. But Bensonville is listed on there, so I know Bensonville does a dial-a-ride.
Okay.
Bensonville, I know at 6:00 in the morning, I see Bensonville's small van is running around. So 6:00 in the morning, they're out.
All right. So taking number five is going to have to be some, uh, you think you have it ready for council? Or can we go back to committee? All right. So then I'll make a motion. Table number, item number five, Pace van pool lease agreement. Table back to committee. That will be my motion. Next committee, whenever that may be, I don't know. January 12th. Do I have a second?
Second.
Question?
It's totally plausible that we probably won't have it by the next committee. I mean, Pace is really, really slow.